A very big proponent of this. Growing up in the desert in El Paso, we had these every all year long, you know, it's just a way of life. And I really appreciate the fact that we're saying educate, educate, educate first. You know, let's help the city come along with this. Through social media, through mailers, through all this kind of stuff. I think I think we need to go ahead with this. However, I do want to just ask this question. This is for city for the city. I hope that the city will be following the same rules like watering. Not in the middle of the day and I know on parks and that on big high volume areas. How would that work? And then again, I hope that we're going to be watering early in the morning or at nighttime.
So thank you, counselor, because that is something that we sometimes get asked about because we have these ordinances. And, you know, if we're not complying with it, what does that mean? So for most of our areas, we would be complying with this. However, there are a few parks and Cole Park is one of them where if we have during this time, huge event after big event and the wear and tear in the grass. And sometimes just the the amount of water we need to put down doesn't always allow us to do it 100% during that time. So the ordinance that actually already exists, so this is not new. It exempts those unique situations where there is the high use area. But that's not necessarily every park. And so it's not something we take advantage of or anything like that. Andy, did did I answer that correctly or did you want to add anything else? I'm thinking that maybe I answered it correctly. That's what I'm going to go with.
How about like Adam State and other big users with big lawns and that?
So Adam State and honestly, the school district, when we do get complaints, a lot of times it is those entities as well. So again, for some of their turf, it's not high traffic area. So our expectation is that they would be complying with the existing ordinance. Which is during the times, not during high winds. And then obviously, if this is passed tonight, we would maybe need to work with them. Because, you know, for Adam State, they've got different buildings. With different addresses and I'm not sure their sprinkler system is going to work the same as odd even days and those. So we will work with those unique situations. But if they have a high use field, then clearly they would be exempt as well. And then Andy, I saw you took your mute off and then you put it back on. So I didn't know if you wanted to add anything.
Oh, in general, I think you're you're very accurate. Sometimes we have to double the cycle after an event or weather. Or there just are other even unique circumstances that just don't align with watering in the morning or in the evening. But our but our staff is certainly well aware of when it's best to water. And if it's very windy, you know, they're not going to just do it. So anyway, thank you.
We have a thank you, Council Daniels and then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I sort of, well, I do agree with Counselor V Hill on this. We've been talking about really tightening this up year after year. And I feel like we've gotten to the place where our community service officers are getting out there and people are starting to get to know them and really looking at this and doing it very much. And Heather, tell me if I'm misunderstanding, but it would be like the other nuisance ordinances that if there's a complaint, we're going to go out and examine it. We're not going to find people the first time they don't know that the ordinance is in place. I know not many people look at ordinances when they move into a town. And so I do think having these kinds of restrictions, I don't think this is odd for communities. I think especially in this day and age of really wanting to be conservative. I've really appreciated kind of the thoughtfulness and modeling this after other cities, not just kind of going rogue. So I do appreciate that and it sticks out to me. I remember Counselor Hensley, I think when I first got on council was talking about how when she lived in California, they would get fined and they had to time their showers and things like that. And that has stuck with me ever ever since we had that very first conversation. Because that was not something that I had growing up. And and so I do think that this is important for our community and I think it sets a good example. I do think we really need to make sure that we have the conversations with our, you know, making sure our staff is continuing to do what they say they're doing and that we're able to tell people what that looks like. Because I don't like looking hypocritical. So it really is important that we follow our own rules and help other people follow the rules. But I trust our team to be doing that. So I do agree with this, especially since we've been talking about it for as long as we've been talking about it. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Carson.
Deacon, with the software that you use to track the watering, how granular is it? I mean, as far as, you know, you made a statement earlier that you could tell when somebody's watering, peak times, you know. It sounded like that software is pretty granular, that it's got a pretty good grasp of what a customer is doing on a daily basis.
So I think maybe there's a little bit of confusion there. So what we do when we try to, you know, figure out how much water usage there is, we've got a lot of ways to look at that. It all base is based on our billing software.
Okay, you just answered it. I get what you're saying now. Okay. So there isn't a water tracking software. You're tracking that through billing and through the man on the ground.
Right. I think the tracking element is if somebody is a habitual, you know, overwaterer or abusing the no wasting ordinance, there are ways to to figure out who those people are through enforcement.
Okay, so I will make one point before you guys vote on this. It was stated earlier by Heather that one of the one of the tools that that people use or that communities are using now is, you know, people calling in, people calling in and saying when they see there's a violation. I could see, you know, in situations where, you know, there's dire straits, you know, I agree with that 100%. There's there's a dire situation. But I think this promotion of having neighbors call on each other just to, in a sense, you know, enforce a policy, I guess, that you're giving that neighbor the ability to enforce it. I don't think that's promoting good neighborly values at this point, especially with some of the stuff that's going on nationally now with COVID. And, you know, if you see somebody breaking a COVID rule, you call. I think you're creating a big divide in people and in neighborhoods. And when you when you want to promote that to people and tell them, hey, if you see your neighbor doing something wrong, you call the city and you report them. Again, if you see them dealing drugs, that's different. But to push the idea of that, you know, that mentality, I'm not a big fan of that. So I just wanted to make that point of, you know, make that point right now. I don't think that's a good push for people. I don't think that's something that as a council, we should make our community or encourage our community to do unless it's valid. You know, we go back to when we did the smell ordinance, things like that. I think it's wise to remember that we do need to be neighborly. So on that note, I think I do think it's a little bit of an overreach, but I do believe in conservation. So we can move forward.
Okay, I see Counselor Daniel, your hand is up. No? Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. The only comment I would have is that I just would, I know counsel, we've been talking about this for quite a while now. And everyone has some valid ideas and opinions about us moving forward with this. And I thank you for being considerate of all of our residents. And I really do hope people are neighborly and instead of calling in on your neighbor right away, you know, talk to the neighbor. Just tell him, I might get a neighbor you have to talk to about this issue about the sprinklers. So just talk to your neighbor about it and hopefully. Heather, do you know in the education phase, do we have like door hangers that will hang on the doors to notify people or warn them in some kind of way?
So it won't be door hangers. We do everywhere, but we would probably look at maybe door hangers for the warning. So if they do see someone who's in violation, we'll have some type of mechanism that alerts them that we, hey, we saw this. Did you know we've got this ordinance? Here's the information, that type of thing. But we won't be doing door hangers as part of our mass education in the beginning.
We'll also use other media formats to make sure that people are educated as well. Am I correct in saying that?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I did raise my hand again. So I wouldn't want us to promote one conservation effort by killing a bunch of trees in another effort. So, you know, let's really be mindful of all of the resources as we're as we're looking at how we're doing this and making sure that we're not stuffing an extra piece of paper in an envelope that we're using paper we already have. Those kinds of things, that's I wouldn't want the education to conserve water to kill more trees.
Thank you, Counselor Dan. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I don't see any other hands raised, so no further discussion. Ms. Holly, would you take the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
No.
Counselor Broyles?
No.
And then Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried five to two with Counselors Carson and Broyles casting their no votes.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Up next on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For you, the ordinance approving intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa County Fire Protection District operate and maintain the live burn fire training facility. The facility is jointly owned by the city and county fire district. It is setting on city property. But this allows for that agreement and the fact that we will be splitting the operational cost 50 50 between each entity. With that, if there are any questions.
Okay, so what we'll do here. Counsel, do you have any questions of Chief Chapman? Anyone? Okay, there you go, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you. Chief, I just wanted to see how your first weekend went. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to make it out there, but I wanted to make sure everything went well last weekend.
It did go well. It was a pretty intensive two days worth of training, excellent instructor. The guys got a lot out of it. There's a lot that we will be doing with that facility beyond live fire burning. It's capable of doing a lot of things for us. Probably 70% of the training we will be doing out there won't actually be by fire with all the different functions that the building has. But it went real well and we had some tired guys by Sunday night, but it was good.
Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Hensley followed by Counselor Grego.
Well, I was one of the lucky ones who got to go on the the day of. I don't know if it was a ribbon cutting because I didn't remember any ribbon, but it was really neat to do the walkthrough and see what it was like. And then I drove by the next day to watch it on fire and all that. And it was pretty exciting. And so I think this is a great opportunity. It was great to hear from the different firefighters how this is really going to help. So I think in the long run, it helps all of us and helps our community so that our firefighters are the most prepared they can be for when these situations happen.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Grego?
I agree with Counselor Daniels and Counselor Hensley. I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass on first reading ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty. Consider for a public hearing on June the third at seven o'clock or sooner after.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I was just going to make a comment too, chief. I would like to thank you and your entire team for allowing Counselor Hensley, Counselor V Hill and myself to attend over the weekend to see the building simulate being burned, I mean, being on fire. And you have a great team and I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. Ms. Holly, would you take the vote?
I needed Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes, thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good. Okay, counsel, that brings us down to item C, committee reports. Are there any committee reports today? If so, raise your hand and I'll try to recognize you. I see Counselor Grego, you have your hand. And then followed by Counselor Hensley.
I probably didn't take my hand down there.
Okay, no problem. Counselor Hensley, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so I had a couple of meetings. So we'll start off with the tree board. Gosh, the energy there is just so exciting. But right now they're working on the North River Tree Project, which is by the golf course. There's 18 trees provided by partially with the Excel grant. And so they're working on doing that right now. The other thing is because of obviously COVID, there's no requirement for an Arbor Day event this year. But at the same time, the in the future, I think we're going to do this in June, expect a proclamation and some, we're going to do some things anyway. It's just really exciting. One of the things that's being looked at is by the airport, there are some blue spruce trees that are a little high or a little tall. And so they're going to need to be trimmed and has to do with the flight pattern or the flight path for the planes. And so looking at that and just a lot of great, exciting stuff that's happening there with the tree board. We didn't get around to doing the $5,000 matching. We were going to do a matching sort of thing with if people wanted to donate trees and stuff. So we will add that for next year. And then I also went to the marketing board. And as you can imagine, since the marketing board truly runs a big part of obviously their their finances is through hotel taxes. They're being hit very, very hard with the lack of tourism. And so definitely relooking at budgets. Obviously, very hopeful, being very proactive to encourage, first of all, local engagement, once we are able to do that. And then obviously, safe, careful tourism when we're at that point as well. But big decisions that have to come right now from there. The barbecue, which is normally in August. Fingers are still a little crossed, obviously, every day. It looks less and less likely. But we are, we're going to wait till the beginning of June to make a decision there. So hopeful that things will happen there. Then obviously, everything is still going forward with our partnership with the city, with us, so both of us. That partnership with the stage. And something that's being looked at right now, Adam State has actually offered to put in a little money into it as well with the potential of having their name or something on the stage or some sort of, I guess, promotion. So that's being discussed as well as which could help both the city and the marketing board with that cost. And at this point also, because of all the cuts, the motorway, the motorway now is definitely put on hold. There is no funding to be able to go forward with that project. And so we will reevaluate that come probably December. We'll get at this point until we sort of see how things look and if people start seeing it at hotels. So at this point, it's just on hold and it's just sitting there. All right.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Heather, I believe you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Grego, I didn't know if you wanted to do a report out on our Main Street Advisory Board meeting yesterday. If you want me to say a few words, I can do that as well.
Please, please do. I, yeah, I wanted to say a couple of words on it. We did get, we did get a good turnout and there's, they're really positive about finding ways of how we're going to go about getting finally these businesses open. And you were going to have a meeting this afternoon, I believe, and look at some different ways of we were going to figure that out. Thank you.
You're losing track of time, just like I am. So we actually had the meeting yesterday. And so it was a meeting with city staff that included our Public Works Director, City Attorney, Finance Director, City Clerk and myself and our Economic Development Director. And the the purpose of the meeting was to brainstorm on if there's more we can be doing to helping businesses, specifically restaurants, bars, those from a hospitality perspective. I shared quickly today with the joint meeting with the commissioners. I think there's a lot we're going to be able to do and we want to streamline it and not have much of a process. We still want to make sure though that that we are doing a little bit of an approval process because that helps do a point in time where we are doing something different. So then when COVID is done, then it's the point in time when we end doing that different. And so, you know, the low hanging fruit is is those restaurants that have dedicated parking. Having a very simple process for them to show us where they'd like to do outside dining, have that get approved for those restaurants that do not or and bars that do not have outdoor, dedicated outdoor parking. Well, all parking is outdoor, sorry. We would, we would look at using some of the the city facilities. So there could be, for example, closing the half block of San Juan, using the city parking lot between Oscars and Ruby Slippers. Maybe using some of the other parking lots from a rear entrance perspective. We probably do have a few businesses that it's going to be a little bit more challenging just because of where they're located, but we're going to try to be as creative as possible. We also are looking at how we can be creative with signage during this time. So businesses can make sure people know they're open. And if they are utilizing a parking lot that's behind them for outdoor seating, people know that's available and and those types of things. Clearly, there may not be as much parking available to park right in front of your your location that you want to go to. But I think our our thought is it's better to be able to walk towards something than to have something be closed and not have anywhere to walk to. So I think creatively, we will be able to make make some things happen. We want to get that up and going as soon as possible. So once the governor either statewide allows restaurants to open within with certain restrictions or if the counties request for variance gets approved and we could initiate that. So once the state government allows one of those things to happen, we want to make sure we're ready so we can help help our local businesses.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, do we have any other committee reports? I don't see any hands raised. So not, we'll move on down to staff announcements.
Mayor, we do have Andy and Harry who do have a few quick ones and then I do have a question for counsel.
Thank you.
Andy, it looks like you popped up.
All right, thanks, Heather. Mayor, Council, a few things for you out of Parks and Rec. The first is a little bit of bad news. Our annual fireworks show put on by S L B Federal has been canceled in consultation with the fire chief and I. They will look to do it maybe later in the year as conditions allow, but there's a lot of factors involved from crew availability to the weather to yada yada. So anyway, though, I have some some good news to share. First of all, our Blanca Vista Fishing is Fun Grant Project is materially complete. We're still, we still got to put up some railings there. So when wheelchairs go to fish off these new bulbs, they have a little bit of safety railing there. But what's what's really cool, I'm encouraging you all to go out there is these new fishing jetties sit about eight feet over the water and people are using them as scenic overlooks. I've seen wedding photos going on out there. It's not only a fishing benefit, it's an incredible aesthetic improvement for the community just to even go out there and check them out. And along with this project, we have a hardened pedestrian boat ramp. So now all the paddleboarders, you might have noticed out there, they don't have to wade through the muck. This was just a really, really cool project. The trails coming along out there, I'd like to give John Reiser credit. He helped me write that state grant. And the park is really hopping with the dog park and everything else out there. So I encourage you to go check out those improvements. And I want to kind of give a shout out to all my departments. I hope you had a chance to read about Larry, Larry the gnome from the library. Where's Larry? He escaped from the mural in the story room. And if you haven't seen Judith's mural in the story room, you need to go in the library and check it out because it's a fairy tale incredible mural. But anyway, the the beauty of this is the creativity when none of us can travel right now. We can follow, we can live vicariously through Larry, see where he's going. And he's also giving some, a little bit of PR to local businesses because that's where he'll be showing up. He might make an appearance at some of our rec facilities. Just incredible creativity out of the library team. And I wanted to really share that and hope, you know, in a time when all of us can't travel, we can watch Larry and see what it'll be like soon. Parks has really been busy too. Something really, really cool that isn't going to get any press is they redid the fields, leaf fields. They leveled them out after years of lip developing from the outfield to the infield. They took tons of material off the edge. And when we do resume play out there, it'll be some of the nicest fields we've ever had. So kudos to them. And they they also Duncan, a staff member with them, redid the rec center entry with the Zurich, Zirkscape theme and it looks really nice. It's not just rock. There's some plants there. I think it looks really good. So I encourage you to check that out too. Golf and rec are just steaming along. Golf is busy. They've adapted to our systems. I'm very proud of them there. I'm getting positive comments on the aesthetics of the course. The weed controls improved out there. They've had to change how they do things a little bit, but I'm just pleased with how it's going and how the public's responding. Anyway, the creativity and innovation out of my divisions, I'm very, very proud and their can do spirit in this time. And everybody needs our leisure activities. So thanks for listening tonight.
Thank you very much, Andy, and congratulations to you and your entire team as well. I see V Hill has his hand up. You're muted, Counselor V Hill.
Yes, a question for Andy is the about the fishing back there at Blanca Vista. We were told that it was it was going also to improve the fishing habitat. Can you comment on that? What does that look like? Or do they do anything special in the water or any specifics to improving the fishing in there?
So, yeah, two good questions. Sorry, I didn't cover that. Two facets to that. One, in the original grant, included the sinking of some logs and other habitat near these jetties. So as you walk out on the edge of the bulbs, you'll see sunken logs and other kind of habitat that was created. We also recruited help generously from Trout Unlimited, who then added three or more other fishing spots where material was removed from just outside the shore, brought on land and created more habitat, sunk rocks, logs in these areas. So there is now five or six improved fishing areas via depth of the the water, which allows for a little bit colder temperatures and habitat improvements from the sinking of, I guess, trees and other stuff. And Deacon is part of that effort. So I, you know, if he wants to comment on it, feel free.
Andy, is there, is that pond stocked?
Yes, as part of the Fishing is Fun Grant, you know, CPW was a key partner. And this year they're actually upping the stocking by about, I believe it was 30 or 40%. And that started, I believe, in mid-May or it's getting, it's going to be stocked any day now. Now, right now, it's a youth only fishery, but we have our adaptive population adults. So we'll be working on an ordinance to change that. But CPW's ultimate goal is that to that to be a sustainable fishery. So that'll be open to everyone, adults, not just adaptive population families. But it needs to be a little more sustainable. If it were to be opened up right now, they're afraid it'll just be cleaned out in a couple of weeks. But yes, there's going to be a lot of fish in there. Take your kids over there. Take a walk. It's it's a really awesome little park that we've all contributed to. Thank you, Andy.
Do you have your hand up to contribute something to that?
I did. I'm taking my city hat off and putting my trout unlimited hat on. One of the kind of long term goals, getting at the the increase of fishing and fishing options, fish density. We're actually planning to partner with Adam State. Dr. Navatney has some students who are very excited to do some aquatic testing. So looking at the temperature, looking at the dissolved oxygen, all these different metrics that are important for fish survival and habitat. We'll do that through the winter because that's a really hard time for those those fish to survive potentially. And then that data will inform what sort of fish are going to be stocked and and what's going to have the best chance to survive. You know, maybe yellow perch, maybe more bass, maybe sunfish, maybe more trout. It all depends. Um, it all depends on what that that temperature data and other data comes out to look like.
Thank you, Deacon.
Thank you, Deacon. Okay. Um, next, I believe, was it Harry?
Yes, and then um after him, we do have Chief Anderson as well, I forgot to to mention Chief.
Okay, no problem.
A fact to to follow, uh, well done, uh, Andy and Deacon. Um, I was just going to give you a quick update on First Street, I want to share a quick little map here. Um, as you're probably getting a few questions about the progress, or at least the the phasing of First Street. Uh, we've broken it down into three phases, the orange being the first phase, the where we're currently working. The blue is our second phase, and of course, the yellow is is the final phase. Um, first one, Monterey to El Rio, we're currently working um. In that area, replacing all the utility lines, they they're just wrapped up the last storm line on that. And they're working on the upgrade, and what they'll do is they'll take that subgrade down thirty inches and then and rebuild it, getting some of the. The poorer grade material out of there. Um, they should have that completed by the end of next week and then start, they're going to move to the utility work. Excuse me, on phase two, and then move back to phase one with the final grade, or they'll start working with Alcon Construction. And uh, A C I, uh, they'll be doing the sidewalks, curb gutter, dry pans. Um, and should be, hopefully have the asphalt in place and be ready to open up phase one. Towards the end of June or first week of July. Um, with a little bit of leapfrogging in there, we're hoping that the second phase will be a little bit shorter and then the third. Um, the project has been, you know, knock on wood, it's 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 run very smoothly. We're we're on schedule, the neighbors, the community, they've been very understanding. Um, we've only had a few minor complaints that we were able to deal with, so so far, a very successful project.
Thank you very much, Harry, appreciate that update. Um, just want to make sure, okay, I see uh Councilor V Hill has his hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, just a quick comment, I live like three houses down from phase one. And it's going awesome, the guys who are working on it are just getting after so much stuff flying around and banging and that, it's cool. Um, I did have one. Comment from some of my neighbors who live on the street, and I communicated this to Heather and uh Harry, is that uh because. Poncha is a feeder street to First. Um, we still are getting a lot of traffic kind of coming down and then realizing, oh, this is blocked off, so they're doing a lot of U-turns and that. Um, and we just have a few children out playing and that, and I I told um. This individual that I would communicate that to Harry and to Heather, at maybe if we could get a um. A some signage. From uh. Further south on Poncha, saying that this road is blocked up. So, thank you.
Yeah, I I relayed that concern onto staff to try to get the signs placed. Um, it may have slipped their mind, but I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you very much, Harry. Does any, do you have any council members that have any other questions? I don't see any hands up before we move to Chief Anderson, okay? Chief Anderson?
Mister Mayor, Council, I hope you guys are all doing well, it's good to see you all. Uh. Just an update from from police, obviously, we're extremely busy trying to adjust to the way things are now. But I think we're doing quite well. Um, I'd like to hit on a couple of things that were mentioned earlier, um, as far as nuisance violations. I I looked up a few numbers, I'd like to read those off to you just to kind of let you know what's going on. Um, and just be aware that more than half of these numbers have been self-initiated by our code enforcement officers, so these are not called in. Uh, so I pulled the numbers since March, and we are looking at. A total of a hundred and fifty-nine incidents that we've handled. That's just code enforcement, it's not the sworn officers. We have well over half that have been compliant with these violations. We've only had to issue thirty-seven notice of violations. A couple of those have resulted in a citation for the violation not being taken care of. Now, these individuals, you have to understand, when we issue these notice of violations, they still have ten days after that notice is given to them. To show that they're compliant or becoming compliant, um, if they can't make it within that ten days. They are more than welcome to call us for an extension. Um, we're pretty lenient when it comes to that, we do give extensions if we see that they're working on it. So I guess the biggest thing is, and it and I understand where uh Councilman Carson's coming from, but I I do want to. Remind the community that calling us is what we need, we can't be there to see everything. Obviously, we rely on the community to call us and advise us where the violations are. So that we can reach out to people not only to educate, but sometimes to enforce. Um, you know, right now, I think one of our biggest ones, we've we've started seeing some compliances is with the railroad. They are starting to work on that, that's been a tricky one, but we're starting to see some compliance in that. Do you guys have any questions for me?
So, just, can I just jump in real fast too? So I think the other part, Chief, that that we talked about is um. Sometimes my concern was having two new C S Os. Um, is were they feeling comfortable with our process, especially with weeds? Where we would provide notice, um, and if they don't take care of it, as it still works its way through court, we sometimes will abate it. Because I think sometimes what you'll have during the situation is if a citation is issued. As it works its way through court, when you're dealing with weeds. Uh, you're talking a lot of days where those weeds are still growing. And the chief did assure me that the officers feel comfortable with that process, and they're using it when appropriate. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Heather, for that follow-up. Um, I have um three hands up, and this is the order, we're going to go. Counselor V Hill, Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Grego.
I forgot to lower my hand, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem, Counselor Carson, then Counselor Grego.
Um, Chief, so I guess one of the issues that I've seen more than residences here, especially in my ward. Um, there's tons of properties that are owned specifically by, I know tons of them are owned by habitat. And those properties are a mess. A couple of lots up the street from my house, and I've actually talked to them. I've I've personally gone online and uh done the form for a couple of those properties last year. So I'm going back to comments I just heard from a a a public comment a few meetings ago. Um. Is it harder, I guess, and you just said with the railroad too, but is it harder to have a big entity? In, you know, clean up some of those lots, or or is it harder to enforce with a big entity like that, I guess? And and answer is probably, I'm sure it is, because like I say, I've talked to them personally, and they've given me the the. I guess the idea that they can't clean them up because they have limited resources. So in those cases, what do we do as a city? Like, if there's a fire hazard and that person is unable, you know, whether it be physically, financially, whatever it is, to get that lot cleared. What can we do as a city, I guess, to mitigate it or?
So as far as the 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 bigger entities, I mean, talking maybe the railroad, if we mentioned something like that. So we've talked to the federal agencies um who monitor the railroads. And they have insisted that we go through our city courts, and I've had discussions with our city attorney about this. Um, and that's the process we're going through currently. Now, if it gets to the point where we do not get compliance, then yeah, we're going to invite the feds to take over and and do their portion on this. We've done this in the past, um, we try not to do that, we we really do want compliance, we try to keep a a good working relationship with everybody in our city. Um, for the most part, I think we have it. I think the biggest issue that we've run into, as you're aware, you've been to many of the neighborhood watch meetings. We don't get people calling us about these. So even though you see the violations out there, we may not see those violations. So we strongly encourage, I'm going to continue to say this, that we we strongly encourage the community to reach out to us. They can call us anonymously through our non-urgent line of dispatch, or they can get online and they can report the uh the nuisance issues. And we'll take care of them that way as well.
And Chief, to add a little bit to um to answer Michael's question um a little differently as well. Um, so when we have organizations, so either railroad, because they're somewhat a little different. But if it is habitat, or if it is another agency that owns a lot of property, um. That to us does not necessarily make any difference. I think my understanding is we would approach them like we would a regular property owner, where our first approach is to try to get them to do something. Um, if they don't do it within the amount of time they're given, then that's when we step up our enforcement. And we we wouldn't be treating different organizations differently than we would from. Um, a a person on social security needing to maintain their their yard as well, is is that correct?
That's correct.
What, one quick note, one more note on there, or just caveat to that, uh. This isn't weeds, but I've had some complaints in the last two weeks about um graffiti, okay? Now, if there's a property that is basically abandoned for all intensive purposes. Um, you know, we've dealt with a a couple of the houses up the street from where I'm talking about, you you know what I mean, Ken? Like that orange house that had caught fire, they've they've tagged that house up, they've tagged a couple of other other houses that are. Kind of, like I say, either without owner or the owners don't have anything to do with the house. What can us, what can we do as a city to clean some of that up? Because I almost feel bad hearing all the positive stuff that's going on and then having to talk about this, because a lot of the the residents are mad. Because there's, you know, it it's basically nobody's going to clean it up, because there isn't a property owner. So as a city, can we do something to mitigate some of that or or fix some of that up, I guess, clean it?
So we're working with Public Works on this um to condemn the house, which I believe we've already done um with the one you're discussing. And we are in the process of the abatement, so that's a it's a lengthy process, it does take a while, um but it's in the works.
So if there's immediate graffiti, like for example, I don't know if City Market had to take care of the one last year, do you remember that there was a really? Awful mural on City Market in the back? So if there's stuff, or a awful painting, it wasn't a mural, but if there's stuff like that, you know, houses here in the neighborhood that have been. Um, graffitied up like that, is it possible for Public Works to? Put some brown paint over it, anything, just so it's not horrible?
No, so really, that comes back to the owner. Um, they get a notice of violation just like anybody else, they've got ten days to fix that up. And if not, they can go to court, and that's up to our city attorney in the courts.
So your first example, Counselor Carson, was because that building is working, it's it's been abandoned, and it's working its way through the condemnation. But then your other examples where there's there is either a business in the building or a resident in the building. They are responsible for the cleanup, and that's something similar to how other communities handle it as well.
Well, no, I mean, well, I guess the the mural was was the tying factor then, or the the graffiti. But these houses that are up here that I'm talking about are kind of in the same situation, maybe they've been foreclosed, they're in litigation, they're they're. Kind of the houses that have been used by, um, you know, people have been kind of squatting there, there's a few of them up. Up in this neighborhood that I've seen, that I went by, because people called me, and yeah, they're just full of graffiti. And there's basically, nobody's going to ever do anything about it till we go through the same process and and have it, you know, either abated and then. The city take over, but in the meantime, you still have all this graffiti sitting there. You know, it could be years, in a sense, so as a city, from an aesthetic standpoint, if we have an abandoned property like that. Um, from a blight, even a blight issue, should we step in and do something about it?
So we would still need to follow the the process um of providing notification and time for the property owner to fix it. So even though it looks like they've abandoned it, there's still a prop, there's still an owner of record. Um, and so we can't do anything on their property until we've provided the proper legal notice. And then if they don't abate the situation, that's when we can then go on to the property and abate the situation.
So Eric, you had your hand up uh in between some of the questions that uh Counselor Carson had. Do you want to respond at this time, because it looks like you haven't had a chance to talk?
No, that's because Heather keeps answering the question, so I don't need to.
Okay, alright, thank you, okay, thank you, Counselor Carson, I didn't mean to cut you off, uh, so were you done? I just want to make sure that Eric was.
Yeah, you meant to cut me off, no, I'm just kidding.
I want to make sure that Eric had a chance to respond to the questions that you were asking them, because his hand was up. Okay, we're good, let's go on down.
He neglected to say that not only did I answer them, but I answered them correctly.
Okay, alrighty, so now we're going to move over to uh down to uh Counselor Grego, and then followed by Counselor Brawls.
Yes, uh, Chief, this afternoon, we met with the uh county commissioners on this COVID variant that they're applying for and. Are they going to work with uh trying to help businesses get open and so forth? Uh, there's been talk up out there that there's going to be a march, either, I don't know if it's Saturday or Monday, and. I was just wondering, uh, and this might be also for our counselor. Uh, how do we handle if something like that happens?
So I guess the biggest thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, you know, I've talked to the city manager about this, we're obviously trying to create a a plan. To keep our staff safe and the and the community safe as well. I guess the biggest thing right now is we really want to make sure that we're not seeing something criminal in nature, such as. You know, getting on Highway one sixty, which is our main street. Um, and interfering with with traffic, or causing some type of disturbance. In those cases, we really don't have a choice but to get involved. We do intend fully on on enforcing what the orders are, but we have to be very delicate with it. And I don't think we want to walk in there with with a heavy hand. Um, so that's why we want to discuss things with people and just ask for compliance as as best we can.
And and you know that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the chart, so Counselor Grego, the other part too, that I think sometimes people don't realize is. Um, they think it's their constitutional right and and those types of things, and so when Chief indicates that he's talked to me, that meeting also incur. Included our city attorney, so Eric, I don't know if you want to um share a little bit in regards to our discussion on if we can. Interact and and require compliance. Or if that's something that would be an executive session.
Oh, that doesn't need to be an executive session, and and certainly, the answer is. Yes, we can interact and and require compliance with the orders issued by the governmental bodies having authority, which in this case are the governors. Executive orders and the Colorado Department of Health's. Uh, we're all familiar with the safer at home orders and and orders in that series. Uh, the delicate balance that the chief is talking about is we sometimes. There are instances where people want to try to make a statement and see if they can go to law enforcement into some sort of overreaction. And that's, you know, that's doesn't help anybody, so that's not. What what we want to avoid is is actions that inflame a situation, and we have a a very professional police department. That I think is going to be able to make that kind of determination. Um, but it should also be quite clear that the Department of Health orders and the governor's executive orders are enforceable and will be enforced.
And uh, one thing that our city and manager uh did speak of, one of the commissioners brought that up in the sense, and. I appreciate the answer that uh our city manager gave back that, you know, an order is an order, and we're obligated to follow that order, and. I, Chief, I also appreciate that you have, the way you talk about handling this delicate, but still, uh, the law's the law. And uh, I appreciate that.
And and Counselor Grego, as you bring that up, one of the things I was going to ask Council on that enforcement question related to COVID. Because there's a whole spectrum, and and so you've got those who are complying by everything a hundred percent, and they're staying home, and they're kind of. Even going to the extreme on their compliance. And then you got others who are talking about, we need all the businesses to open up on Monday, or we're going to do a protest march, or you know. So they're at the other end of the the extreme, um, but then you you do got some stuff that's here in the middle, I mean, we just had graduation weekend. Um, and some people um in the parks may have been having gatherings that that were larger than the ten, and so. It's 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 a, it's this balance, and our officers, you know, if if, so when you have this, that's on this extreme. It's it's, as the chief's talked about, that interaction has to be a certain way that we're not making it worse. Um, but yet, we we also feel as if we're upholding what we're supposed to uphold. Um, but if we've got these gatherings in the park, there's going to be contact, and and we're going to make contact to explain that they might be violating. Um, the the orders and and to ask them to disperse. Um, it's, we're not going to escalate items or or anything like that, but we are responsible. Um, for upholding those those orders, and I'm thankful we've got the department that we do and the professionalism. department that we do and the professionalism that we have with our officers. If you were to poll our officers, I don't know how many of them agree with the orders. I don't know how many of them agree with the face mask. I don't, none of that though matters at the end of the day when it comes to, um, doing enforcement on that order. But my question for you guys is if you're good with that answer, then, then we don't need to schedule another discussion. If you want to discuss it more tonight, we can, or if you want me to place it on a future agenda, I can do that as well.
Well, I, I'd like to discuss it more.
Well, I personally like what you just said, you know, it's a little, a lot of common sense and I, and one thing that you did emphasize, and I totally agree, is the pro, 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 professionalism of our, of our police department. And, uh, I, that speaks for itself. So I, whatever you just said now, Heather, I, I follow, I follow a hundred percent.
So, uh, Brawls has his hand up. Followed by Michael Carson. Counselor Carson. Counselor Brawls.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, uh, during this COVID thing, has the crime rate now mostly gone up, stayed the same, or what's been the trend there?
So Chief, if you want to address that, and I think it was related to certain items, but if you want to address that, or do you want me to answer?
Yeah, I can, I can address that. Um, Mr. Brawls, I, I would say it's, it's about the same. I have not seen an increase in anything currently. Well, you know, let me get that back.
We did have a bit of an uptick.
The only thing that I can honestly say we've had an increase in would be you've got a, an increase in domestics. So, you know, that, that's really about it. And I think that's just because everybody is stuck at home.
So I was under the impression there- So Chief, I was under the impression there for a bit, we had an uptick in, um, theft and those types of things because the, the jail was no longer an option. Was that-
So, you know what? I mean, that occurred, oh, I don't know, a month and a half ago. We did have an increase a month and a half ago. Probably already the paper, but that was in, uh, that was probably in relation to a lot of people being furloughed and released from, from jail, things like that. You know, the more criminals we have and the less, uh, options we have because of legislation, the more crime we had. Uh, it seemed to last for about two weeks and it has calmed down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Brawls. Counselor Carson.
Um, well, I guess I could, this, this co, this comment or question was going to be, I guess it's not directly related to the chief, so it could wait. I can do it during council comment. I was just going to ask, um, you know, about a future work session or about putting this on a future agenda. So I don't necessarily, I'm not trying to put the chief on the spot in this particular instance because I know, like they said, you know, that they'll, they'll abide by whatever they have to. But I would like to get a feeling, you know, for, for how council feels. They, they posed the question today. You know, what would, what are we going to do if, if businesses, I mean, I saw it on, I saw it online today. Um, what's going to happen if, if, uh, they'd said a certain restaurant was talking about opening up? And, you know, what's going to happen if you have restaurants that open up, uh, on Monday? How, how heavy-handed are we going to expect the chief to be in compliance when we've just had conversations about, you know, um, my personal feelings or personal people, people in my neighborhood feeling that the code enforcement wasn't being um, enforced on the weeds? And then you have an officer go in and try to arrest a business owner because they opened. Not that, I'm not saying they would do that, but you know, how heavy-handed are we going to be here? And it's a real question that's going to come up because, um, we may see a modification to the Safe at Home on Monday. I don't know that it's going to be lifted. I mean, I, I really doubt that it'll be lifted. And so do we, do we talk about this in the future? I'm not fine just saying, hey, go ahead and do whatever you want. I'm not, because ultimately our necks are on the guillotine council. Keep that in mind.
Well, and so Counselor Carson, unless counsel directs me otherwise, and I'd have to feel of how I feel professionally about that to communicate more thoroughly about it. But from a city manager perspective, what I can tell you is if we have a business open, our law enforcement will make contact with them. If they refuse to comply with that, we will do a citation and we will escalate it to where they are given a ticket. Um, I'm not sure if the public health has additional, um, stuff at their disposal for cease and desist or, or different items like that. But we will be en, enforcing, um, those. And at this point, um, this isn't an education issue. It's, it's a matter of, um, businesses kind of know what they can do and not do. I know when we have made contact in the past with businesses, it's been very amenable. Um, sometimes they were just like, oh gosh, uh, you know, kind of got caught. Some of them honestly didn't know that they just needed to do a little bit of changes. So my hope would be that's how those interactions can come. What I'm worried about from reading some of the comments that are going on is that's not how it's going to go. They're intentionally, um, disobeying the public health order, which then will put us in a, a thing to where if they don't um, comply, we would have to do, um, a citation. Chief, is, is that the process?
Oh, but hold on though. Does that put us in a position where we're in opposition to the, the emergency draft resolution that the county drafted today?
Has not been approved. So we are-
What I'm saying is if it does, does that put us in opposition to that or do we support the county?
We support the county, but we have to enforce what's currently in place. So until the governor approves the variants, that's not what the order is. The order is what's currently at the state level that the governor's issued. We can't, and we, we can't go by the ordn, the variants until it's approved.
No, I'm not talking about the variants. I'm talking about the emergency declaration.
You know, that-
Yeah.
And that emergency declaration merely asks the governor to reconsider the orders and consider allowing especially rural counties to have a greater voice in determining what's appropriate for them.
Oh, I understand that. And that's why I say we as a council should weigh in on that and, 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 and be part of that because it's a valid question. I mean, does the, does what applies in the metro apply here? No, it doesn't. So we, we have to, we have to consider weighing in on what the, I mean, not, not a hundred percent it doesn't. I guess I should retract that. But as far as from a numbers percent perspective, it doesn't. So I think we should weigh in on that and at least talk about it in the future.
Well, I think council very much should give direction on if we want to send communication to the state, which we've already been doing, by the way, on the need to reopen and our support to try to get businesses open. That's an entirely different discussion of disregarding when the, when someone's breaking the law. I mean, those are two entirely different discussions. And so, um, the county's resolution is trying to make a firm statement to the state that they feel like we're different and that we should be able to open up. I don't believe it's saying that we're, you know, people can just break the law and those types of things. There were some statements, and I don't know if they changed it, that were a few red flags for us that they were indicating they don't have the resources to enforce it. I don't feel like we're in that situation. Um, so it's not language I would recommend, um, for our city operations.
And so, um, I have, uh, Counsel Brawls has his hand up.
Oh, um, I'll take it down.
Okay, Counsel Carson. Okay, um, so, so Chief, I, I, I'm, I'm big on, um, education and educating people and, and, and I'm also big on making sure that we, uh, have a united message and make sure that we're not sending out mixed messages to our community. And for you and Heather and Eric, could you explain what the current order consists of when it comes to crowd, uh, gatherings and what is allowed, what isn't allowed? That way, if, if measures have to be taken to, uh, make sure that everyone understands that we have to enforce these orders, everyone would have an idea of what's type of, uh, order is being broken or what is being done in an order that's causing a person to receive a citation when it comes to crowds gathering.
So Eric, I'll take a stab, but, um, Chief or Eric, if, if I'm missing something or get something wrong, please feel, feel free to jump in. I think there's a lot of nuances to the current order. So, um, the, there's requirements out there that if you have employees working, there is the social distancing, the face masks, certain requirements for gloves, depending on wha, what type of activities you are as an employer. Um, there's requirements to monitor the, the health of your employees, those types of things. So there are requirements as employers, um, that they need to be aware of. In regards to the public, there is not a requirement that the public has to wear face masks. Um, my impression is that if businesses want to require that, um, they can. But we do get concerns from some of our residents because they're mad when people aren't wearing the face masks. While it is a recommendation, it's not a requirement. So that's not something we can enforce. There's this overarching, um, gathering of no more than 10, um, individuals. Um, that's really what sticks in people's minds. Now, if we were going to be technical about the recommendation from public health and the governor, they would still like people to not be gathering in groups of 10. It's only if you need to do that from a business perspective or, um, an urgency or, or those types of things. Now, if we're going to be talking about how it's playing out in real life, that, you know, there's people that might be nine people at a picnic shelter. We're not going to, we're not going to be doing anything, um, related to that. So for our enforcement, it's that, that 10 number is, is what we would be looking at. For our city facilities, we still have, our playgrounds are required to be closed. Um, swimming pools are still required to be closed. For private and public, um, gyms, I believe, um, are still required to be closed. Restaurants, um, can do curbside. And so the big push now is to try to get it to where it's open. The governors indicated what will play a significant role is if they do allow restaurants to open, they, there will be social distancing requirements that would make the, the, their, their numbers inside so low that it may not be financially profitable for them. So that's why they are strongly urging communities to get creative to allow outdoor, um, dining because that will allow restaurants and bars to have the numbers they need from a profit perspective. Um, I believe churches, is it still, churches are not allowed? Um, and places of worship, I want to say. Is there other big categories to, to answer this question, Chief or Eric?
You nailed everything that I knew. I thought you did a really good job. So I'd ask Eric if there's anything additional.
Well, I was trying to scan the order, um, but I misplaced the order in my electronic file somewhere. So I have an older order that I was looking at. I'm, I couldn't think of anything off the top of my head.
And so for public education, we do have all of this on our website posted if anybody wants to read it. And we also have it on SLV Emergency Facebook as well. But those are kind of the top level. But if you read the public health orders, there's a lot of recommendations and a lot more details. But as far as what I think our community is mostly focused on, it would be those, those areas.
So would, would it be safe for me to say that we, we don't want people to intentionally, uh, be defiant? Uh, because it could cause our city to have to, um, have their hands forced to do, have no other choice but to enforce the law. Is that safe to say?
That is what my, my opinion is. Um, it, it, I get this frustration and, and I'm not going to pretend I get it the same way that that small business owner gets it because they're probably losing sleep and, and I'm not, I don't want to downplay this at all. And when I look at you as counsel, historically, what you've done to try to support businesses even prior to COVID, um, with different types of programming and efforts and partnerships in the, the downtown plan, um, the hiring of the economic development director, facade grants. There's a lot that we've been trying to do to, to be a great partner with our local economy and the businesses because they're, they're critical and this is killing us. And, and it's, it's, these are our neighbors who might lose their business. And it's, it's the heart of our, our town and, and the employers are struggling. And so no one is, is taking this lightly. What I'm worried about is the, the building up of this frustration. It's, it needs to go somewhere and some of the areas it's going may not be accomplishing what they're hoping to accomplish because doing a protest march, I, I don't, I don't think that's going to do anything to change the governor's mind. If anything, I think it makes him less likely to think we've got our situation under control. I, I think intentionally opening your business is not going to get the governor's attention. What it does do though is here at the local level for our law enforcement officers who are part of our family here of wanting to be good partners and be supportive and help work on these community issues. Now they're having to go and have the conversation with that business owner of you can't be doing this and potentially issue a citation and, and work on getting that situation taken care of. That's not what they want to do. That is absolutely not what they want to do. They want to be finding the people who are doing the graffiti. They want to be finding the people who stole someone's bike. They want to be doing that kind of stuff. But if they're having to do this, it's not changing anything at the state level and it's instead putting us in a position to be not anti-business, but definitely not the relationship we want to have to be when we're talking to that business.
Thank you, Heather.
Let me say this real quick. Look.
Counselor Grego, then Counselor V Hill, then Counselor Carson. Um, so, um, Counsel Carson, let's let Counselor Grego first because he, he's been, uh, waiting. And then we'll, we'll chime in on this. We'll continue to have a discussion. Go ahead, Counselor Grego.
I had, uh, two comments. One is, uh, if the business decides to open up on their own, that it's the health department also that, that has to enforce this, this order also. So they're, they're in line, almost in front of our police department. Uh, if something, if, if something like that happens. Uh, secondly, if we get, let's say we get about 30, 40 people marching downtown, is that some kind of violation or is, uh, is that something that, how do we, you know, and, and the chief already said that he was going to treat it real sensitively, but is that a violation, Eric, if we get about 40, 50 people? Uh, um, hand in hand marching down Main Street?
Yes, it is. Um, and let me just read the language, the enforcement language out of the Colorado Department of Health order because that's what we're focused on. And the enforcement language is this order will be enforced by any appropriate legal means. Local authorities are encouraged to determine the best course of action to encourage maximum compliance. And that's what we're focused on is determining the best course of action to encourage maximum compliance. So i- if we have 40 people hand in hand somewhere, but they're not blocking traffic, they're not otherwise creating a disturbance and it's going to cause us uh, danger of putting officers in harm's way to try to do something about it. What's the, what's the most effective way to encourage compliance? Is it to let that burn out? Is it to cite them later? Is it to, you know, whatever the options are? Uh, but the, it, that's, that's the discretion that's given to uh, Chief Anderson and the police department is to, is to encourage maximum compliance. That's what we're doing. It's trying to encourage maximum compliance and keep us all healthy.
I will say too, from listening to the state, um, the state provides, um, weekly webinars twice a week at a minimum. Um, and the, the communication from out of the governor's office is if cities and counties are not enforcing this and doing so intentionally, it could impact a certain state response to that. And so they, they've bluntly talked about, um, they, not shirking your duty as a local government.
Okay, uh, Counselor V Hill, then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Heather, you had mentioned earlier about the city. I mean, very pro-business and I believe we are with all the stuff that we've done prior COVID and during COVID. Uh, could you comment maybe on the loan program that we established? And how many businesses have taken advantage of that and where we're at with that? I think that'd be good for, for people to know.
Thank you, sir. So what we did is we offered, um, zero percent interest loans. Um, the, the loan period is 18 months. And so if a business received a loan, they wouldn't have to make payments, um, all the way up until a year after. So that lasts six months, um, is when we would definitely need the payments, um, for that. So it would hopefully allow a timeframe from a cash flow perspective that they could get the cash they need now, um, and not have to make any payments until a year out. Um, we budgeted or we, we agreed to about a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we received either 16 or 17 applications of those, um, or 16 or 17 businesses, um, of the- Of those, we awarded to nine, but some of those nine owned multiple businesses. So it was a total of fifteen total businesses did receive the loan, and we are just a little bit shy of that hundred thousand. We're about ninety-seven, ninety-eight thousand that we were able to get that money into the businesses that applied. If we would have seen applications twice that and, and those types of things, we probably would have come back to council to, to see if we could go above that, that hundred thousand threshold. At this point, we don't seem to need to do that, but I will say that Kathy is monitoring the situation, because we definitely don't wanna lose a business during this time.
Right, and so it's, it's, it's my impression that this is, this was like a bridge between everybody having to stay home and then till things can open up again, correct?
Yes, sir. And, and for the cash flow to start picking up again. I mean, it's, their customer shopping's not gonna jump to what it was, especially with tourism and, and some of that. So it's, it's not just a matter of reopening. It's, it's reopening and, and getting shoppers' behavior closer to what it used to be.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay, Council Carson.
You know, I, I've heard for the last few weeks, especially, you know, especially the last few weeks, a lot of people, and they're mostly people that I'm dealing with on a regular basis, people on these Zoom calls, people that are working, you know, every day, every day at their job in, in public service, or it's in, you know, IT, whatever I'm doing. But, but this COVID thing hasn't necessarily impacted me the way it's impacted, you know, my neighbor. I, I, financially, it hasn't hurt me the way it's hurt some other people. I hear everybody always saying, oh, we're in this together, we're in this together. That's not true. There's two complete different fa- you know, facets of people here. There's the people that are suffering every day directly because of being locked down that got the twelve hundred dollar stimulus, and that's the only money they've received in two and a half, three months. And, and so it's easy for, for people in my position to say, you know, you know, just, just be patient, hold out, you know. And, and, and I heard a while ago the comment, you know, we'll be reprimanded if we shirk our responsibilities as community leaders. I think one of the biggest community leader responsibilities we have is looking out for the people in our community. And we have done that from a health standpoint. I don't think we're lacking there. But I just want people to keep that in mind. Everybody says, we're in this together, we're in this together, and I know we wanna be. But I know everybody on this call hasn't been impacted the way some of the other people in this town and in this community have. So just keep that in mind when we're making these decisions from, from our seats up here. You know what I mean? I just want people to think about that. There is people that are suffering really hard right now, that, that they, they're gonna, they're gonna not open. They're not gonna open their business again. It's not feasible. They've cleaned out their savings, things like that. And, and us, all of us sitting here, I mean, maybe not all of us, but I know from my standpoint, it hasn't affected me the way it's affected other people. So, and I don't have money. I'm not a person that comes from money or, or has money, but financially, it hasn't affected me. So that whole thing of everybody's in this together, it doesn't necessarily wash out that way. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Carson. All right, Council V Hill, you have your hand up? Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so. Any more staff announcements? No? Okay, good.
So Mayor, I, I don't, I swear to you, I'm not trying to prolong this. I guess I just need to note, so Counselor Carson's indicated he may wanna discuss this further. Is this something you want me to place on the, the next agenda, or is, is this the discussion you felt needed to happen?
Now, so how do you all feel? Do you feel you have enough information now? Or do you feel we need to have another meeting at a later time? Going to defer back to council to see how they feel.
I have enough information now.
Okay, thank you, Council Ball. Council Gregor.
I think we've gotten good explanation on this, and I appreciate that Carson brought it up. And at this time, we did discuss it for a while now, so it's, I'm good with it.
Thank you. Counselor Hensley.
So I guess I just wanna make sure, Heather, what are you actually asking to make? I wanna make sure we discuss what, I guess, what is the goal of our discussion?
So that's for you, you guys. So I feel like we've more than talked on from a staff perspective, if we're gonna be honest, on, on what we're planning on doing from an enforcement perspective. But if, if there's not complete comfort with that, or if you wanna further discuss this, then just direct me and I can put it on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor V Hill, then Counselor Daniel, if you could tell me how you feel.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I feel like a lot of this is out of our, our control. You know, it's coming from the county and the state. I think, I think the, the best thing we can do is just make sure we have our ducks in a row, especially for our bars and restaurants, that when they can open up, or whenever this variance is accepted, if it is or not, that we have plans in place that the bars and restaurants especially can open up safely. Okay, and then that they can take advantage of the outdoor dining. I really appreciate how hard staff has worked just the last few days, coming up with different plans, the different parking lots in and around the downtown area. And I'm, I'm glad, I, I talked to Heather a couple times about this over the last few days, about, you know, ma- maybe we focus. Okay, how do I say this? All restaurants are important, and we automatically thought about the downtown area, but you also have to think about like Chili's and F's and Locavores, and, you know, all the outline restaurants within the city limits too. So, like I said, I think, I think it's, it's important that we are ready to go quickly for, to help restaurants and bars when they can open up. Okay, and then, and then my next que- another maybe a little small question. Heather, I don't know if you brought this up or talked about it, but you talked about parking lots. How about sidewalks, especially along the downtown area?
So, um, so thank you for that, because I think a lot of people think of that. So the, the first part is we're gonna try to be as flexible as possible. So especially for those areas that are kind of a little bit of an enclave, and they have a little bit more room, that we can be a lot more flexible there. But we still need to make sure we're meeting ADA requirements. So we still need to make sure that there's the, the white, the right width is unobstructed. So, so we can have people that, that may need to, to get on the sidewalk through. There's been some questions on, have we looked at wanting to take some of the parking spots on, on Main Street? Given that it's one sixty and the, the, the traffic that's there, some of the safety concerns, and my understanding for the outside dining is even if you have it, there still needs to be the social distancing. So if you look at a parking space, you're, you're, we take that and we go through all that trouble of getting that parking space, but you're only gonna get three tables in there on what that nets. So our focus has been more for those restaurants that aren't on a corner, because those who are on a corner, there's a, the street's right there for us on a side street. So those that don't have a corner, is there a parking lot behind them that we can use that would gain them a lot more seats and not have us have to go through the headache of working with C dot? So that's what our priority focus is right now. But clearly, if we run into some different things, that's not off the table. That's just not our focus right now.
Okay, and, and, and just to reiterate some of the things I haven't said already, kind of Mr. Carson said a little bit too, like, I, I'm lucky. I, I understand. I'm super lucky. I have a government job. I'm a teacher, and I've been getting a paycheck the last two or three months, and I'm gonna continue to get a paycheck, and I am very thankful for that. And I understand that there's a ton of people who are hurting and hurting really, really bad, and I feel for them. And posting stuff on Facebook that we're here for you and we're with you, I mean, that only goes so much. But the things that we can control as a council is, is getting plans in place and getting things done. And that's why I really appreciate this team, because we just get things done. We have plans in place so that when things open up, boom, they're ready to go. People don't wanna be staying at home. People don't like working from home. I, I, I don't think so during this time. They wanna get back out. And I also, and I also want to highlight and, and, and communicate that people wanna be safe when they go out and eat, and they go out and have a drink. And these businesses are going to create atmospheres. And I've talked to many of them in the downtown area and now, you know, all over town, and they said, we, we wanna open up. And of course, we're gonna make it safe so that people have the confidence to keep coming back to, to spend their money. So I just wanna share those thoughts a little bit about what some people in the business community have told me. Thank you.
Thank you, Council V Hill. Counselor Daniel.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I, I agree with the, everything that's been said. I don't feel like we need a separate work session to discuss this. I think I trust our team to make enforcement decisions. That makes sense. The one thing I would think is, we also need to look at, people are reacting out of a fear and hardship due to where they are right now, but also they've been isolated for two months. So not only are we seeing a real anxiety around money and funding, we're also seeing other things like depression, anxiety, many, many other things that we're not used to dealing with, because we're not interacting with people the way we normally interact with people. So our emotions are all high, everything is super intense, and we're really having a hard time just taking a step back and even trying to, to be that, because this is not our normal. And so really giving grace, even though it's hard, I think is really important with how stressed out, because people are in such different situations, both financially, personally, emotionally, than they ever have been. We've never gone through this together. We've never gone through a place like, like this in, in most of our lifetimes, not, not all of us, but most of our lifetimes. And so I think that there's, there's gotta be some grace given to also the emotional and mental stress that is also impacting the way people react on social media. They react in person or in some of the high-stress times, because these are super, super high-stress times, and not everybody is on a level playing field, and, and they don't feel like we're in it together. I think Counselor Carson hit it straight on the head. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. And Counselor Hensley, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I do also agree with everything that's, I think we've discussed. I'm very proud of the fact of how proactive we are as a city and how everybody's really been thinking this through. Again, backing up the idea that the city also putting that loan together. I mean, again, we're doing, we're trying to do things. It doesn't take away the pain. It doesn't take away the hardship a lot of people are having. But I think as much as we can as a city, I feel like we're doing a lot. And I also, but, uh, back up with what Counselor Daniel says is, I think everybody's pretty high-strung right now. They're pretty emotional. And even ones, I know even sometimes I'll see something on Facebook or somebody else, something else, somebody will say something, and sometimes it might push a button and it's taking that step back and not engaging. But if not everybody is at that point that they can do that. And so just remembering that people aren't sort of maybe acting their normal self, that it is a sensitive time. And so anyway, so I, I sort of, I guess what I'm saying is I support so far everything I've heard. And, and I think we, so I think we've said what we can. I don't think there's much more. And I hope people in the community realize that as a city, we're not for or against, we're not trying to not have businesses open up. We're doing everything we can that's within our powers.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. And I, I, I tell you, I, I really don't feel like we need other, another meeting to discuss this, being that not only are we in meetings and staff are in meetings on a routine basis daily, in and out all day. If we're not looking for resources to help our businesses, or we're out there knocking the doors, talking to the businesses, we're out there talking to employees, trying to find resources for those employers, we're trying to direct them to areas of concern that they may have to make sure that they have the resources, we are doing this every day. And I'm telling you firsthand, and it's not me only, it's the team that we have working for our city. And there is no benefit whatsoever for us to want our businesses not to succeed. Our businesses were already struggling prior, in many cases, some of them were struggling prior to this epidemic. For, for us to want something to happen for us, not to want the very best in the public safety for residents, there's no benefit for us to want our community to succeed, I mean, not succeed. And we know that a part of people not being able to open up, it could cause a small town to become a ghost town. So to all the business owners out there, we want you to succeed. We want you to thrive. To all the people in the residence who are concerned about their public safety, public safety is very important to us, and, and we're concerned about that too. But this is what I'm, I'm proud of. Everyone here on the city team, what you're doing is you're putting the interest of the residents first before your own. And that's what we're, 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 we're priding ourselves on. And you know what we're doing? We're being proactive. We're not being reactive in, in many cases. A lot of things people don't see, or they don't read, or they don't hear, and assume we're not doing anything, but we're doing a lot of things, and we're being proactive, and we're gonna be proactive all the way through this. And I just wanna encourage everyone to just stay strong. Don't let all the negative comments get to you, because there are people who know what you are doing, and we will continue to move forward, and we'll continue to do things that's right, just, and fair for our residents. So Heather, I hope that gave you enough input and feedback to let you know what direction we are gonna move forward in from here on.
Yes, sir. I did notice that Counselor Carson unmuted himself.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Carson.
The thing is, is this, we, we, I didn't necessarily want a whole other meeting to discuss this. But the thing is, guys, is what we gotta understand is this isn't coming off the radar, because they did file the variance. Once the variance comes through, we'll have to, we'll have to work on that. They did fire the, file the letter of, you know, extension of the emergency declaration. So my point is, is that we will have to discuss this in the future. We're gonna have to be dynamic. Now, do I want a whole other meeting on it? No, of course I don't. This is a horse we beat to death many times. But the thing is, is keep it on your radar, guys, because we are gonna have to be dynamic. That, that was basically my point. I, I didn't necessarily want a whole other meeting, but yeah, we gotta keep it on our radar. We can't just say, oh, you know, everybody's got control of it. It's, it's good. We don't need to talk about it no more. No, it, it will keep coming up until, you know, until we're not having these Zoom meetings anymore, for sure. But, uh, yeah, just keep it on your radar. That was my point. I didn't necessarily want a whole other meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to, looks like the liquor licensing action that we have on the agenda. Is that gonna be Holly or Eric? So Mayor, if you wanna turn that over to me to conduct the public hearing, that would be normally the way that we would do that. So if we are that happy to do that. So at this time, I would like to, uh, turn it over to Eric so that we conduct the proper public hearing.
And I'm gonna bring the applicants in to speak also. They do have an attorney representing them. They have Carl Keenholt on the line that is representing them.
And so do you know which of those attendees you're needing to bring over then, Holly?
Yes, I just brought them all over, so. Carl, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
So we can just move all those attendees over, and if, if nobody's there to make a public comment, they'll just silently attend, I guess. So just a, a brief note on the format of the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the applicant, Sam Cuisine, to establish for council that the reasonable requirements and the desires of the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood, which is the city of Alamo, also across a one-mile radius, support issuance of the hotel, restaurant, liquor license that they are seeking at their business. And what we will do is start off with the applicant making its presentation to council. Council can ask the applicant questions after that presentation, and then I will open up the floor to comments. First of people in favor of granting the particular license, and then people against granting the particular license. And then we'll bring it back to the applicant again if they have any last comments, and then to council for discussion. So with that, Mr. Keenholt, I understand you are representing the applicant. If you wanna make that presentation to your council, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Are you able to see my clients, the owners in the background?
We can't see your video.
No video at all?
I don't see any video. I have all three of your profiles, but I don't see a video. I don't see any video. I have all three of your profiles, but I don't see a video.
Huh. One sec. So you can't see me at all?
No, let me, let me try something.
Yeah, I don't think it's on my end. I, I don't have, I don't have anything showing me a video link on.
Let me try promoting you. Okay, I promoted you to a panelist. We'll see if you can, uh, show your video that way.
Okay, it started.
We see you now.
Okay, so. All right, yeah. So I have you both on my phone. And then we have our, since we're trying to do the social distancing in my office, so I have you on my phone and then I have my laptop on so you could see my clients. So, okay, thank you. Um, uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm, I'm here representing, um, it's called P O R M Z A B B L L C, but they're doing business as Siam Cuisine. And that's located at nine sixteen Main Street. It was formerly and temporarily, uh, called the Tempura House, I believe by a previous owner. And before that, it was a Greek restaurant. Um, historically, at least from what I can recall, it maybe was a hair salon for many years in the nineties. I'm not quite sure what it was in the early two thousands or middle when I, I didn't live here at that point, but we've applied for a hotel and a restaurant license, uh, with you guys and the owners are, uh, Pyan and Julie Crick. They are sisters and they're from, uh, Florida. And, uh, the restaurant is, uh, Asian cuisine. And, um, what I'd like to present on behalf of them is that in these times of COVID, obviously, our town, our town's economic engine is going to be paramount to our city's ability to to earn sales tax and to continue to pay for our citizens' needs. It is well-known that dining establishments' margins of revenue are generally small. Um, if any, without a liquor license. Alcohol sales, um, are, they are one of the main sources of revenue and income that help restaurant owners ability to thrive and earn money and to turn over a profitable business in this, uh, area or in, in the country in general. Uh, Siam Cuisine is located, uh, a little more on the west part of Main Street. It's one of the main arteries of our city's economic prosperity. And, uh, my two clients are hardworking, responsible sisters from Florida, as I mentioned earlier. So far, they've done an excellent job, um, surviving in these times. They have a very faithful following. And, uh, we were able despite COVID to have, uh, some petitions prepared and signed, which were, uh, admitted. Uh, and in those petitions, there are seventy-nine signatures. However, I recognize that sixteen of them were from out of the neighborhood area that you need to consider. They were either from Center or Montevista or even from out of state. In total, we were able to provide you sixty-three, uh, signatures as well as my clients just showed up today. Uh, or this evening with another ten signatures. Um, and all of these are from Alamosa. Um, but I, I just was handed that. Um, I can forward that on to Holly if, if you want to verify their signatures. In addition, I provided as another exhibit, an email I sent out to more than twenty individuals that had signed another piece of paper prior to the petitions. Um, four of those individuals did respond, um, all within the neighborhood area, uh, supporting, uh, Siam Cuisine getting a liquor license. All of these signatures that you have are emails are from their customers. Uh, and they've done the best job they can, can, they can in these times to keep their restaurant going, particularly without this liquor license. As, uh, you are aware, you have to consider basically two requirements. One, the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood um, are not being met and two, that the inhabitants of the neighborhood desire it. We do feel that the petitions that we've submitted in the emails do evidence of prompt number two, that the inhabitants of the neighborhood desire it. In terms of the reasonableness requirements of the neighborhood, in that particular part of Main Street, there's only one other establishment that is, uh, pretty much next door that is Emma's. They do have a liquor license. Um, but in that particular area of Main Street, there are no other restaurants or bars um, within a couple blocks radius. Uh, I do not think that when you look at the neighborhood as a whole, that, um, there is, that there is not a need for another, uh, liquor establishment here. Um, there are a restaurant that has the ability to serve, uh, liquor. Uh, they do believe they do have an outdoor seating area that we've applied as part of the license and I, as I was listening to the councilmen and women speak earlier, one of the things that we're going to be looking at when reopening with certain restrictions is the ability to have outdoor seating and I, I personally believe they have probably one of the best outdoor areas in all of, uh, all of our town to have a, a, a nice place for its customers to enjoy food and beverage and alcohol. So they hope that they can use that part and that provides a different type of, uh, environment for people in our, uh, community to enjoy alcohol beverages. Other than that, um, we, you know, the, the whole town itself would benefit from having this additional option to order their takeout or to enjoy at the, the, the city. And so we would ask that this, that, uh, you all please, um, approve this, uh, liquor license at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Keenholt. Did council have any questions for the applicants? Partic- in particular, before we go to comments or from others?
We have, uh, Counselor Carson followed by Counselor Daniels with questions. And then followed by Counselor Hensley, then followed by Counselor Vigo. So Counsel, Counselor Carson, you're up.
Uh, no, I didn't have questions. I hadn't lowered my hand. I apologize.
Okay, no problem. Uh, so the order, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Vigo.
Thank you. Um, I do have a question. Is when we zoned the restaurant, is it, is it zoned to have the outdoor eating? Because I know we've had to talk about that with other restaurants and I don't want to potentially consider outdoor, outdoor liquor license if the restaurant itself isn't zoned for that? Mr. Keenholt, do you, do you know that under the current license?
Um, I, I don't. It was my impression that that was zoned for outdoor dining.
Okay.
Um, but I, Mr. Schweisow may know the answer better than I do.
Um, Counselor Daniel.
Deacon turned himself on. I'm, I'm confident that Deacon has useful information.
It is, it is permitted.
Okay.
The UDC currently, um, in the commercial business zone, which is what they're zoned, uh, they can have outdoor dining, so no issue there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And then it is also my understanding that under the previous ownership, when this was Tempura House, it had a liquor license. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. And then have the, um, current applicants undertaken any training either in safe serve or tips or anything like that to, um, assist with serving alcohol?
They tell me they have taken training.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. I know I saw two of the hands raised, but they, uh, lowered their hands. So it looks like Counselor Brols. Go ahead, Counselor Brols.
Yes, have the applicants, have they owned a liquor license before?
Have, have my clients?
Yes.
What, what happened from my understanding is that there was a application for a transfer from the previous owner that had Tempura House. However, the, the previous owner had a, is, was getting a divorce and so there's a Florida court order that restrained that owner from transferring any assets and the state of Colorado, the interpreted that to include a liquor license. And so that is why we had to apply for a whole new license.
Okay, but have they, have they owned a liquor license in their names before in Florida, anyplace else?
No, this is the first restaurant that they've owned. Um, Pyan was a general manager of a restaurant in Florida for over ten years. And, um, uh, Julie worked in the restaurant industry her entire career, but this is their first opportunity to own and a liquor, or own a restaurant. And so this is their first time asking for one.
And so they know the code and they know the expectations?
Yes. And that, and that I'm here to assist them if they have any questions on that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brols. Counselor Daniel, do you have a question? Your hands raised.
I apologize, Mayor. I did not lower my hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Eric, back to you.
Okay, and before I open it up for comments from anyone else wishing to speak on this issue, uh, let me just make sure Holly, that we have, uh, the that Mr. Keenholt was talking about. I think he said he had ten new ones. I know that there's a, a box that was part of the uh, meeting packet, but there's appear to be new ones that we need to get taken care of.
Yeah, so I did not have the new meeting or the new petitions, but he, I did attach the ones he submitted to me on Monday.
There. And so I think what we'll do is my, is, uh, we'll designate those that are in the meeting packet as Exhibit A. Any new ones that, um, get submitted, either the ones on Monday or any, I think he said he had some with him, um, will be Exhibit B. And then the notice I saw, we had a, a photo of in the meeting packet as well, which would be Exhibit C. And I would just ask you to confirm that that was posted the necessary number of days prior to the hearing.
It was.
Okay, with that, um, we'll open it up for anyone wishing to speak in favor of issuance of this license. And I think the best way to do that is to have them raise their hand. Clicking on the button and Brandon can explain how that happens. And then you just move them in as panelists. If that way we can get video if they want the video.
Okay, uh, Brandon, can you, uh, if you don't mind, would you please share the instructions for anyone who would like to participate, uh, on how to raise their hands, either by phone or by computer?
Sure, Mayor. Uh, anybody who is called into the meeting, uh, can raise your hand by pressing star then nine on your handset. Uh, if you are in the meeting through the Zoom application, when you hover your mouse over the application window, a bar should appear at the bottom of the screen, which raise hand should be an option. It's a button, a button on the bottom central part of the screen.
So Holly, do you see any hands raised at this time?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay, so I see, uh, Erin has raised a hand.
Okay.
And A D S has raised a hand.
So. Erin, are you there?
I am, yeah. I just wanted to say I, I love this restaurant. I love the, the two sisters and what they're doing there. Um, I'm in full support of them being able to get a liquor license. Uh, I appreciate Carl, uh, Mr. Keenholt and, uh, the city uh, bringing this forward. Uh, I think it would be a really great thing for downtown.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, um, I see a Shanay with her hands, hand up.
You got it, Ty. This is Shanay. I just wanted to also speak up in support of a liquor license for these wonderful people. I've experienced nothing but, um, just really respectful, um, service when I go there. And I think during this time, we just want to be as supportive as possible for our businesses. So I definitely want to just kind of give my vote of support too.
Thank you so much, Shanay. Appreciate that. Okay. So Eric, I don't see any other hands up. So is this the time where we close the hearing?
Well, so that I had asked for people wishing to speak in support of the application. I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the application to raise their hand.
Raise that hand by hitting star nine on your cell phone or clicking on the, uh, button, the, on center, on the using your laptop.
Yep, and I see no hands raised. So at this point, um, I, I would return it if council had any further for questions, which given the comments that were generally quite complimentary and support, I would doubt they do. Um, otherwise I would, uh, close the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Thank you, Eric, and it's now council. Uh, we bring it back to you for your thoughts. Um, and any motions that you would like to make. See any hands up? So Daniel.
Thank you. I was struggling with my buttons. I apologize. Um, I, I am in, in support of this. I, uh, frequent this establishment a lot. I went to it when it was all of the different incarnations of restaurants that it has been. I do also think it makes it, um, more fair to the restaurant that it, because of the restaurant that is attached to it that has a liquor license and that, um, there was a I, uh, based on what Mr. Keenholt said, a kind of a technicality of why this shifted. And I know there were some changes with the family and things like that. And so I am, I am in support of the, the liquor license being, um, awarded and, or granted. Um, I do know getting more signatures is hard during this time, so I really do appreciate the amount of signatures that they had gotten. And I also appreciate the diligence, um, of letting us know which ones were not from Alamosa and trying to, um, make that, uh, make that up with the emails, signatures and things like that. So I just wanted to say thank you for that diligence.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. I have Counselor Hensley followed, followed by Counselor Grego.
I echo what, um, Counselor Daniel said. I am supportive of this as well, um, for all the reasons she said. And I just think at this point, um, the restaurants that want those liquor licenses tend to get them. And it is something that's very complimentary, um, to the meals. Um, and they run their business. I've been in there. It's very professional. Um, and it does complement that whole envi- the environment, the atmosphere and the experience. So I support this.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Grego.
I had a comment and a question. Uh, my comment is, uh, this establishment, I mean, the, the area has had several liquor licenses in it. What I've seen in the past. And, uh, how do we handle this? Do we, uh, can we move on this or do we, Eric, uh, do it the old way where we, uh, do the pros and cons and then come back and make a decision later? Because I know in, in the time of business, if we can move as fast as we can, it'd be nice to get this, uh, moved.
I think council is quite, council is quite comfortable with the new look for dealing with liquor licenses, which is, um, if, if it's not a close call, you tend to make your decision by vote tonight and direct me simply to prepare written findings consistent with that decision for your adoption and consideration at the subsequent meeting. Because you have to do written findings, but you can certainly make the yes or no decision tonight.
With that, I, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve this liquor license for this establishment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, I, I too, uh, would, I tell you, I've been to the restaurant quite a few times and the food is delicious and they always are very kind and professional. So I, I wish well-much success. So we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. Ms. Holly, would you please take the vote?
Uh, Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. Thank you so very much. Counselor Hensley, I, I see your hands up. Your hand is up. Did you uh want to say anything else? Okay, all right, good. All right, so that brings us down to the end of the agenda. Uh, council comments. Um, do we have any council members? And I'll, I'll, I'll uh recognize you um in the order that we're going to have uh. So raise your hands right now if you're going to have comments, so I can make sure. All right, so we're going to have our Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Grego.
May, Mayor, may I interrupt uh with that order? Uh, is there a direction for uh Carl and them? Are there still?
Yes.
What direction should they go, go through?
Well, that, Carl's smiling. I think he understands the direction.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you all. Wish you much success.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Grego, for bringing it up. Okay, so here's the order. Raise your hands right now if you could, please, so I can make sure I let everybody know what order we're going to go in. Counselor V Hill, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Grego. Go ahead, Counselor V Hill. You doing the wave?
Thank, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have fun with that a little bit. Uh, I really want to thank Holly Martinez for all the work she did uh for the Alamosa graduation. Uh, putting up the signs and the banners and getting the letter to, to go and all this stuff. And I think uh the um proclamation, you know, just done a lot. We, we, we kind of asked, she was the point person and she did so much. The banners downtown look amazing. I know once we get things opened up again, that, uh, that'll be a, a good little thing for people to see as they, as they go through downtown. And just a, a, again, a congratulations to our graduates of Alamosa High School, Adam State and Trinidad State and all the Valley Schools. Uh, it's a special, a once in a lifetime, probably this never happen again. Uh, they're a special class and congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, Holly, you did a great job on, on those. And I'm actually, I'm so proud to be a member of the Alamosa team and city. And just really, you guys are doing an excellent job in a really hard time with super big challenges. And so when we keep asking you to do more projects, and so I know that that has been difficult. And so the graduation one, Holly, went very, very well. And everyone else is just working so hard. So thank you for that. Um, I also wanted to say thank you to the counselors for the Mental Health Month proclamation. Um, Charlie's probably seen me come with those proclamations now for about ten years, I think. Um, and so I just, I really appreciate us being able to, as a city, really talk about mental health and continue to bring that up in the wellness of our communities. And I think that's just really important. And I, I also appreciate your indulgence when sometimes I can go a little, little sideways, uh, because it's so important to me. Um, and then I also want to say thank you for the large item pickup. Again, the fact that we're still doing some of the normal things that we've always done, in addition to some of the new things that we've never done to plan. I really think that sense of continuity for our community is so important. Um, I know we got to get rid of some stuff that was giant in front of, in like a challenge for us. And I wasn't even sure if that was going to be able to happen this year. And so the team, again, just amazes me with all of the good work that we're doing. Um, and it, it would envy me if I didn't remind us that, yes, so the chief did talk about the domestic violence calls going up. As we know, people who could be struggling, as we know, people who could be in danger, men, women, children, whatever that is, please let's not turn a blind eye to that in this time, even though it's hard. We need to look out for our neighbors. We need to look out for our friends. It is really important that people know their says, they can still get the support and the help that they need. And we need to make sure that they know that. And they need to know that we love them and we care for them and we will be there with them, um, getting them the support that they need. We've had, it, it's going to continue to rise. Um, if people are continuing to have all of these additional stressors that they have in their lives, we know that that is a hard, hard time and a hard place to be. Um, so be, um, being aware of that, looking, looking out for the people we know and love and even people we don't know. Um, you see someone you're concerned about, it's okay to ask if they're doing okay. Uh, and so just a reminder that that's, that is an awful, terrible side effect of some of the things this pandemic has brought on us. And we really need to, as a community, be watchful for that in our most vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego.
Well, Memorial Day weekend is coming up and uh we'll be out there, uh, American Legion BFW putting flags on the graves. And my question is, uh, how are we going to handle the restroom situation out there, Heather or Andy? Uh, I know with all this crazy stuff going on, are they going to be available or not available? So we can let people know. Cause they'll, they'll be out there, not only uh, not only us, but they'll be out there decorating graves and stuff. And uh, I believe it'll be there Saturday, Sunday and Monday.
But to my knowledge, I thought our, our restrooms were open. Um, Andy, if you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, so we're kind of preparing the cemetery as we normally would. It's just, we do have to, you know, watch for crowds or whatever, but we're, we're pretty, we're okay that people are going to abide by, you know, current rules and regulations.
I, I just wondered, you know, just because, you know, now that you go to certain areas, you can't even use the restrooms, you know? And so I, I didn't know if we had some other kind of uh bill going, but thank you. I appreciate that, Andy. And uh, uh, I don't, I don't believe they're going to have any kind of ceremony yet. I don't know yet, as of yet, but I know we will be out there decorating the graves. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Any other comments from council? I don't see any other hands, so just in case. All right. Okay, I'll just wrap it up real quick. Last week, um, our first responders, I want to tell you, thank you so much. We got a chance to see Chief Chapman and uh his fire team. Um, Kristen, the burn training facility. We also got a chance to see uh Chief Anderson. Uh, show appreciation for all of the law enforcement officers uh around the world. And I appreciate you for that. Holly, thank you so very much again for everything that you did with the graduations and, and coordinate with all of the uh, the schools that we, we have in our community. And those banners are awesome downtown. Really appreciate that. And on a, another note, too, um, I drove down some streets today and I saw some new striping. I don't know if that recently happened, but I really like when we strike the streets, streets. It really make them look really good. So Heather, if you can let the team know and um also Harry, uh, that those stripes really looked good. Council, um, I know you all have been getting a lot of heat lately. Just remember this, keep your head up. And uh, my dad used to tell me, he used to say, Ty, if nobody's talking about you, it means that you must not be doing a doggone thing. So let's give the community something positive to talk about and let's keep doing what we're doing. Because you know what? You're making a difference. That's all I have to say. Thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.